All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this special session of the Solvang City Council for Monday, September 27. We'll be starting at 5:30. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Clark informed me that he's not feeling well. He will be calling in for the close session. Councilmember Infante.
Present.
Mayor Protem Aruna.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Yurig.
Here.
Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and I'll lead us?
You offer me? Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Madam Clark, would you please read item one?
Public communications, written or verbal, at this time. Please direct comments to the city council regarding items on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes.
There's no one in here. I have no speaker slips. Is there anyone out there in Zoom land wishing to speak on an item that's on the agenda?
There's one member of the public. If you'd like to speak, please unmute yourself.
Seeing none, we'll turn to closed session and...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pursuant to government code section 54, 957 subsection B, the city council meet in closed session for public employee performance evaluation of the city manager.
Thank you. At 5:33.
All right, we'll recall our reconvening at 6:02. Counsel, would you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council met in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54957b for the public employee performance evaluation of the city manager. There was no reportable action.
All right, thank you. And I will adjourn the meeting at 6:03. See you back here at 6:30.
All right, we'll recall our reconvening at 6:02. Counsel, would you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council met in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54957b for the public employee performance evaluation of the city manager. There was no reportable action.
All right, thank you. And I will adjourn the meeting at 6:03. See you back here at 6:30.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Solvang City Council regular meeting for Monday, September 27th. I'll call the meeting to order at 6:30. And Clerk, would you please take the role?
Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Infante.
President.
Mayor Protem Arona.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Yurig.
Here.
And would you please lead us on the public media?
Please, your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please read the instructions on public communications?
The council welcomes your input. At this time, you address the council on items not on the agenda and consent agenda. Time limit is three minutes. We will start with in-person comment first. Do you have any public comments on items not on the agenda?
Go ahead, Ms. Yurig.
I'm trying to find my mask.
Should be one right there.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll be brief. This is, I'm here to speak about the closure of Copenhagen and the vehicular traffic and parking. I know this has kind of been spoken to death, but I'll be brief on this. I've spoken about numerous times for merchants, businesses that have been impacted by COVID. And a survey was taken in favor of keeping Copenhagen closed and implementing a further Danish environment. Council addressed that drawings and renderings would need to be required. I want to call to your attention that there are drawings and renderings that have been done, and the city currently has them. They've been done prior to your period and other periods, probably prior to my being in Solvang. Tourists have enjoyed the outdoor seating and venues that have kept, create a warm environment for their families. And my goal, I'd like to see, is the continuation of what our Danish founders had, which requires the preservation and the expansion. I look at the downtown area, other than us keeping what is, I would call on Copenhagen, an asphalt jungle. Initially during the prior council, I addressed trolleys that would be small enough to travel and park and drop off shoppers. I think we're looking into that with several different options that I know that are on the agenda that will implement that dream, I think, of keeping Copenhagen closed. And so many of the people that are merchants, as well as visitors, that really enjoy what they're experiencing. And I can also comment, and this is from another committee, is where we look at in moving forward, what the next 20 years we envision Solvang to be. And I think it's very important that we look at, not only that we're addressing short-term goals, but long-term. They're way beyond each and our lifetimes and our visibility, that we can have sustainability that the forefounders of, our forefathers of Solvang, put forth that to create this beautiful little environment that we have all found and have enriched our lives, that we think strongly about that and the tourists that come here. And what I would recommend that we might look into before we say yea or nay is that we do create some kind of committee about that. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments inside? Seeing none.
There's one hand raised on the zone.
Lancey, go ahead. You have to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Mayor Yurig and councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Lancey Duncan, and I'd like to talk to you about the latest project proposed for the lumberyard site on Mission Drive. Access to and from this site is already challenging without the addition of 43 residential units and a 92-room hotel. The frontage along Mission Drive is often congested with vehicles backed up from the Alisal Road/Mission Drive intersection. Every Valley resident has seen this traffic backed up more than half a mile to Alamo Batata Road and occasionally beyond. This can occur during peak hour traffic when the high school gets out on busy summer weekends and on Wednesday afternoons when the farmer's market is operating. When the Solvang Lumberyard was in operation, the entry and exit next to the office was hazardous. Vehicles entering Solvang speed up the hill from Alamo Batata Road and do not see Pine Street or the entry/exit of the lumberyard until they are immediately in front of it because of the curve and the hill. Vehicles exiting along this frontage, heading towards the Alamo Batata Shopping Centers, Los Olivas, the high school, San Andres, the Chumash Casino, or Santa Barbara, have limited eastward site distance to see those speeding vehicles they have to turn in front of. Traffic heading towards downtown Solvang, Bulton, or Highway 101, can be anticipated to use the Alisal Road/Mission Drive intersection or impact residential neighborhoods and Solvang School before joining Mission Drive at Adderlag Road or Fifth Street. According to the San Andres Valley Circulation and Safety Study of May 7, 2020, these signalized intersections have the greatest delay and worst level of service performance of any in the valley. The traffic that clogs these intersections and Mission Drive severely detracts from the experience of our visitors and the quality of life for residents. Although LSD is theoretically acceptable, any Valley resident can warn you that these intersections are already frustrating and dangerous with a mix of impatient local and business drivers, lost and often inattentive tourists, bicyclists, and pedestrians. Adding more traffic to these intersections could easily increase that hazard and cause them to operate at LOS E or possibly LOS F. Even with the automated valet parking structure, this project will be substantially underparked, requiring the city to provide 34 spaces for the use of the development, presumably in the vets' hall parking lot. Reserving almost a third of the vets' hall public parking spaces for the sole use of a private development is totally inappropriate. It should be a nonstarter for any development agreement discussions. The fact that the project does not have room to park all the traffic it will create, even with a multi-level automated parking structure, should tell you that the project is overbuilt, inappropriate, and does not fit the site. Furthermore, adding the traffic generated by the 92-room hotel to the traffic generated by the 43 residences the site is actually zoned for is a recipe for disaster. Mission Drive is the heart of our community, and it's already overburdened with traffic. No amount of TOT tax revenues will fix the problem that will be created. If the council agrees to this development, you will permanently mortgage the future of Solvang, far into the future. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Lancey. Appreciate the comments. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on items that are not on the agenda right now? Seeing none, we'll move to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I have a fairly brief report for you tonight along with a fairly short agenda tonight. Just want to remind everybody again that we will have the next step in the general plan development. Coming up here in November, on November 4th, we will hold the next workshop at the Veterans Hall. This would be the workshop on alternative choices. So the G-PAC will be meeting actually tomorrow to discuss this and start this work. But that work product will go to the community for discussion. It will really be the discussion of talking about the community's take on, you know, how dense is the community willing to become? What type of alternative transportations and mobility choices the community is open to? What does, you know, the design and economic development look like for the community of Solvang? So this would be a great workshop to participate in. We will definitely be pushing out communication about this through plansolving.com as we get closer and all the materials we've posted there as well. And we're really hoping to get robust participation from the community on this one because this is really the kind of the meat of the conversation as to what kind of alternatives the community of Solvang prefers. Just a reminder on different commissions and committees meetings. The planning commission October meeting has been canceled because we don't have any projects that are ready for review by the planning commission. And the next meeting will take place on November 1st. The design review committee, next meeting is scheduled for October 21st. The tourism advisory committee is holding another special meeting this Thursday, September 30th. At that meeting, they will have an opportunity to discuss the regular schedule of meetings and set those meetings going forward, as well as discuss the content of the marketing RFP, which will then come to the council for approval in October. The G-PAC, as I mentioned, will be meeting tomorrow to work on alternative choices and get that process going, get those documents ready for a brief council review and feedback, and then the community workshop and get that community feedback to move forward with the general plan update. We are working on Halloween. The haunted house is back. Once again, a reminder that it's not going to be held at the Theater Fest this time because there's construction going on for the remodel of that project. So staff is working on creating a modified haunted house, a little bit smaller this time, behind the annex building here across the street from City Hall. And they're also currently looking for volunteers for the haunted house to be part of this community event. So if you're interested, please contact us at cityhall@cityofsolving.com, give us a call, or come by to pick up an application. A few other events that are coming up. The council has recently, along with Tac, reviewed the Yule Fest program. So that program will be starting to advertise, and all of the details will be posted on solvingusa.com. We have a couple of other events that will definitely be noticed in the community. One is the Wheels and Windmills Car Show, which is scheduled to take place on October 9th, and then Wine Country Marathon for October 23rd. Looking at advanced calendar for the month of October, the marketing RFP content will be coming to you for approval after we receive comment from the tourism advisory committee. I will be bringing forward to you the fiscal year 2122, quarter one financial report. That's the first quarter of current year, so we'll see how we are doing in terms of our revenues and expenditures. We'll also be coming back to you with additional recommendations on sign ordinance management, parking improvements, the wastewater treatment plan, phase three recycled water alternative, the government logo, DRC recommendations for your approval, and then Solvang Park shade improvement alternatives. And that concludes my report for tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions on this city manager report? Councilmember Thomas?
I have one on the government logo. Are we going to be restricted to the ones we initially saw, or are we going to be open? I know Lancey Duncan has some designs that I would like to see incorporated in our choice. For example, how's that going?
So when the logos were first brought to council, the general feedback was mentioning that there was some desire to look back at the logo that René Kerskov had put together prior free of charge to the city. So we took that comment and took it to the design review committee as they are the group of primarily the designer type of professionals for their look and feedback. And so the logos that we brought to them were similar versions to what was brought to you as part of development of the website, along with a version of René's logo, which he updated a little bit and added more blue color and some of the input that we received from the community. So DRC gave unanimous positive feedback towards René's logo for both utilizationist versions for marketing type of logo and city type of logo. So we'll be working with our marketing consultant under their contract, IDK, to develop the marketing side of that logo. Now continue to work with René Kerskov on presenting you an official city logo, which will be coming from.
Thank you. It was René, it wasn't, was it?
Correct.
Lancey Duncan, so that was what I was thinking of. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions at the city manager report? All right. Next item, council comments. Is there any one wishing to make any comments?
Yeah, one comment, please. The governor has come up with a $5.2 billion water and drought resilience package. We are about to go into wastewater phase three with the recycling capability. I think we need to put in a request for some of that funding to pay for that and the infrastructure requirements to get the water back across the river to the city. So it's just, you know, we need to be aware that it's out there and go ask for the money. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll definitely be looking at those options.
Any other comments at this time? No?
I'll have a few here. Just some announcements. First off, just reminding everyone at the Elveroi Museum, we have the Widening Circles Landscape Portraits of Solvang. It started on the 18th of September and will continue through January 9. And there will be some artist demonstrations. You can go to the elveroi.org website and find when those dates and times would be for the artist demonstrations. And then from the chamber, this Thursday, September 30th, from 5 to 7, there will be a mixer at McLean Cellars. It's the newest business winery that we have in town, 1623 Mission Drive, Suite B. Also, there are still some grant relief programs out there. Applications are being accepted for round nine currently. New applicants and waitlisted applicants from previous rounds can apply. They have, it started on September 9th, the application will be closing on the 30th, so there's not much time left, but contact the chamber for that. Going forward, also more grant opportunities. Childcare Grant Program, which the application is on October 8th, as well as a small capacity building grant program. The application deadline is October 4th through, or the timeframe is October 4th through November 1. And as well, we have the Scarecrow Fest that will be coming up for 2021. Starts on October 1st through the 31st. And the contest will include Bulton and Solvang. And there will be scarecrows that can be found all around the San Andres Valley and Los Alamos during October. The categories are including best photo opportunity, spookiest, most Danish, best business theme, most use of recycled materials, and most humorous. So again, that's sponsored by our chamber, and it's called the Scarecrow Fest. We have coming up on October 9th. It was mentioned that it's not the Wheels and Windmills. It's actually called the Solvang Fall Classic Car Show. So just, so we have that down there, right? The proceeds this year are for Rhona Barrett, sorry, to benefit Rhona Barrett's foundation and for her continued work on behalf of seniors. And the proceeds will actually help fund their senior meal program at the Golden Inn Village. Shred Day is also be coming up, November 13th. So that is a day to remember in Bulton from 8 to 9:30 at Mechanics Bank. So that is a day to remember in Buellton from eight to nine thirty at Mechanics Bank and in solving from ten to eleven thirty at the Veterans Memorial Building. A couple highlights from the SB CAG meeting that I attended. We had, there was a broadband ad hoc committee that held its second meeting to discuss regional broadband coordination throughout Santa Barbara County. The county and SB CAG have, were showing a presentation by Bill, from Bill Simmons of the Pacific Coast Broadband Consortium. And they are the ones that are coordinating all the efforts for broadband for Ventura County, Santa Barbara, and San Luis Obispo Counties. Also, this week, there will be a Highway 154 Safety Committee on Wednesday. And it's going to feature the latest traffic safety improvement efforts on Highway 154. More information for that. And if you want to be a part of it, that's on the SB CAG website, sbcag.org. And that will be a committee meeting that I'm attending. It will be at six o'clock on Wednesday. And also, there were three new members appointed to fill vacancies on the Measure A Citizens Oversight Committee representing the North County. The one that was from our area is Mark Funkhauser. He's the Director of Sustainability and Custodial Services at the Schumash. He leads the San Inez Band of Schumash Indians in their green initiatives. And he lives in Orchid, but travels down and works here in the valley. That's one of the good representatives here. And he has, as one of his accomplishments, in 2019, the Schumash Casino Resort became the first casino in the world to earn true zero waste certification from Green Business Certification. I don't know if anybody actually knew that, but that is pretty impressive. So they are able to divert ninety percent of their waste from local landfills. That is stands right now, which is really great. That's a good model to be utilizing. Carson Link was another one who was appointed, as well as Eric Melshimer. Carson is the district representative for Senator Monique Limone, and he lives in Longbow. I guess just to reiterate here, they're part of the Measure A Citizens Oversight Committee. Measure A is the investment plan and ordinance that provides $140 million in matching funds to local and US highway 101 multimodal improvements from Santa Barbara to Muscle Shoals. And the plan provides $455 million each in the North County, as well as the South Coast for transportation projects and programs to build safer walking and bike routes to schools, increase senior and disabled accessibility to public transit, increase options for carpool and vanpool, as well as local street improvements such as pothole repairs and synchronized traffic signals. So Lansing, maybe we'll have to get them to look into synchronizing our traffic signals here through Mission Drive with Caltrans. I know Matt has been able to utilize Measure A funds for a lot of the projects here. We're appreciative of those efforts that you've done. One of the last things as far as coming up here, October first, we wanted to just remind everyone that Pacific Gas and Electric, Central Coast 3CE and King City Community Power will start transitioning solving residents for us to the, all the electric customers to the time of use peak pricing, four to nine PM every day. So that'll be the rate plan that starts. You will get nine, nineteen hours of lower prices for electricity and higher prices from four to nine, seven days a week now. So that will be going into effect beginning October first. So you are able to opt out if you want, or there's some other plans to choose from, but that is what solving residents should be expecting. And hopefully it will be lowering our bill. Lastly, just for the food bank, just some totals that we had going forward. August fifteenth, they served 225 households, which totaled 916 individuals, forty-eight new households for the month. And August twenty-first, last Tuesday, 221 households totaling of 866 individuals, forty new households for the month. Again, we appreciate all the efforts that Bethania has done over there in helping to feed some of the people that have food insecurities going forward. And I guess the last comment I would like to make is just kind of to address maybe some concerns that were put out there regarding our selection of, for the tourist advisory committee. And I just want to say my thoughts on that, and that's mainly that we were looking for someone that was different in bringing up Alex Grenier as part of that. We have six really, all of the applicants were very well qualified, but I know that I was looking for a younger person and not one of the other people were under the age of 25. And I'm really looking for someone that is going to be able to give ideas on what kids want. We're not here just for the wine drinkers. We're here for families as well. And that was my reasoning for going forward with Mr. Grenier, and I hope that puts that to rest. He has my full support in him being part of this committee and giving ideas to there. And hopefully that the rest of the committee will be supportive of him. And this tourism advisory committee going forward, we're looking forward to some fresh ideas that they might be able to bring forward for the community and making solving downtown a much better tourist destination for all demographics. So that's the last of my comments on that.
May I make one additional?
You may.
You're done? I'm sorry.
No.
A week ago, we had here in the town over at the Cork parking lot, an electric bike test program where people could come by and try out different electric bikes, see if they liked them. I ended up speaking with the people, by the way, Alex Grenier was there taking pictures. I ended up speaking with people about what was going on in Santa Barbara with regard to using bike loner programs where you can rent the bike from point A to point B, check it back in, and there's literally no cost to it, to the rider. So I have contacted on my own to find out what it would take to have something like that here in solving. And we are going to be talking about parking problems. And one of the things that could resolve some of the parking issues is if, for instance, we had an employee parking lot that was offsite and then bikes to get them to the stores that they work at. Something that would cost them nothing. I don't know what it would cost the city yet. I'm looking into all of that, but that's something I will probably be bringing up as I get more information.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. I forgot that that was there.
It was by, it was by.
Yeah.
So I thought you might said you were going to be, you and Gay purchased once or two.
Well, I, no, I, we bought one of an electric bike now.
All right. So moving forward now, moving to the consent agenda. Madam City Clerk, can you please read the items on the consent agenda?
Approval of agenda as presented. Item B, approved minutes of the special closed session and regular meetings of September thirteenth, 2021. Item C, adopt by title only, ordinance number 21-352. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Solvang, California, adding musical entertainment as a conditional use in the tourist-related zone district, tourist commercial district, and other conforming edits for adoption and second reading. Item D, approve Chamber of Commerce local business map QR code placement on city facilities. Item E, adopt by title only, resolution number 21-1149, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Solvang, California, setting and amending range schedules and benefits for nonrepresented employees per approved fiscal year 2122 budget. Item F, approve the begin date correction to the agreement with IDK Events LLC for visitor center management and operations per prior city council approval for the term October one, 2021, to June thirtieth, 2022, and authorize the city manager to execute on behalf of the city. Item G, approve the cooperative agreement with the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments to receive $1,200,000 in Measure A funding toward the Caltrans project to replace the Highway 246 Alamo Pintado Creek Bridge, and authorize the mayor to execute on behalf of the city. Item H, approve the Second Amendment to the agreement with Sunbeam Solar Technologies, Inc., DBA Sunbeam Consulting for on-call professional services in the amount of $74,000, and authorize the mayor to execute on behalf of the city and authorize the city manager to execute project contract amendments within the contingency amount of $5,000 on behalf of the city.
Are there any council members that wish to pull any items?
Yes, I would like to pull item C on requiring an application for the planning commission for the conditional use permit for music. I just want to make sure, can somebody that wants to do either an event or one thing, do they have the option of getting a permit to do music as an event? Or does it always involve a conditional use permit?
I haven't looked at it in that specific context, but there is a separate special events process. And certainly if someone was interested in only doing it on a one-off basis, we would be looking at it as a special event versus a continuing use. There are different, different standards that we'd be looking at in that situation.
Okay. And then just another question, it wasn't clear after last time we met. How does this affect somebody that is just busking, just, you know, bringing in an instrument and playing?
Because the proposed ordinance is tied to existing business uses, someone who's busking wouldn't be attached to an existing business typically, and so they would be covered by different provisions of the municipal code. This is intended to specifically apply to conditionally permitted uses within the TRC.
Okay, so this is more for like somebody that is using music consistent as part of their business, the guest experience of their business.
Yes, it's ancillary to an existing business essentially.
Okay, thank you. Those are my only concerns.
Did you want to pull that, or did those questions get answered?
I think those questions are answered. Yeah.
Can we have a motion to approve the council consent agenda as written?
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
And the second, second? Madam Clerk, please roll the ball.
Councilmember Clark, absent. Councilmember Infante?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Marona?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Urick?
And moving on to public hearings. Item number five, Madam City Clerk?
Public hearing to consider electric trolley license application. Hold a public hearing continued from September thirteenth, 2021 per municipal code Title IV, Chapter 12, to consider electric trolley license application from Horses Entertainment LLC.
At this time, I will be recusing myself from this item, given my interest on Solvang Street Cars Company.
Thank you, Mayor Council. I have just a very brief presentation and update on this. I have been in touch with the applicant. They have been working with the CHP, and they expect the last inspection to take place on October first. Therefore, the recommendation is actually in the report. I have recommended continuing this item to the second meeting of October. However, given the update that I have received today, my recommendation is to continue to the first meeting of October, so October eleventh.
With that, do we still want to take any public comment on it? Would we do that right now?
It's your choice, yes.
Okay. Is there any ones wishing to speak that's in the audience? I don't have any speaker slips on item number five.
Good evening again. Firstly, I want to say I am in favor of electronic trolleys. Where I become a little concerned on what I've been reading, and maybe I need a little clarity on this. I don't understand why we've gone from one horse-drawn trolley to a fleet of trolleys. It seems perplexing to me. And maybe you can explain that to me. I, I think there is a need for smaller transportation, but I also believe as far as the diversity in any capitalistic society and fair trade, we should have not a monopoly by one particular entity. So, and particularly on what I did read, is that it is not a matter of looking at the city or certain parking, say veterans or the lots, like I initially had addressed with the other council. We're now looking at expanding the trolley to go to hotels and throughout this entire valley. Now, if that's erroneous, I would like to know. And then I would also like to know if that's the case, who's benefiting from this? That's my thing. And I think we as the community of Solvang should be aware of that. It's, it's a matter of why should a few benefit over the course of many in this community? As I say, I'm not against the electronic thinking green. In fact, I'm a vegetarian and I think green all the time. But I think right action on how we want to achieve how we're viewed, as well as how we act are two very important measures. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Are we able to address the question regarding that? That should come in the next one?
Yeah, I think substantively, I mean, I can mention briefly that monopoly is not really the appropriate word. It's open to those who are interested in applying. If others have not applied, that does not result in one operator becoming a monopoly. A monopoly is a very specific legal term, and I don't think it's an appropriate use in this particular case because others have the opportunity to apply if they wish.
As far as a clarification, let me just ask then, I don't believe, at least my understanding of the reading is that this is specific just to the electric trolley and not to the actual horse-drawn carriage, which is a different type of trolley. I don't believe, and just Ms. Sonny, I think for a clarification, my understanding of this is, this is an electric trolley that is specific to just the electric trolleys that are going to be going possibly further out to be able to do what I think you're suggesting, which is maybe picking up people and bringing them into town where they can park offsite a little bit more. This has nothing to do with a horse-drawn conveyance, which while it's a trolley, it's still specific to, only limited to a certain route they're able to do and not be on Mission Drive or across the other side of the north side there. So if I can say that, I think that's my understanding of it as well.
That's correct. There are different chapters under the municipal code. They have different standards, although they are similar in some regards. Completely different applications. You could have completely different operators doing it, but they are, they are considered separately.
Right. Does that help?
Yes, it does. I just, I guess I don't understand why you would still need the horse-drawn along with the new trolley, the electric. It seems kind of like an overkill.
We'll have to discuss that later, but they're basically two different things. One is limited to where they can go, which is the original horse-drawn carriage. The other ones are open to go anywhere, that they have a 25 mile, up to a 35 mile an hour speed limit that they can drive on, so.
Are other vendors aware that they can apply for this? Has anything been put out to them?
The ordinance has been through two public hearings before it was adopted, so yes, this was advertised, that the ordinance had passed, and everybody that's eligible was free to apply.
Were the trolleys in existence prior to even applying for?
I think we're getting into a dialogue here versus public comments.
Okay.
We'll have to take care of those questions at a different time.
Thank you.
And maybe at the next hearing, those can get addressed as well. Bringing it back, are there any comments from the council that we have? I think we'll close the public hearing and move on to regular business item agenda.
If you could actually take a motion to continue the public hearings?
Oh, to continue the public hearings to October 11th, to the next council. So move.
Seconded.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clark, absent. Councilmember Infante?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temerona, abstained. Councilmember Thomas, recused, excuse me.
Yes.
Mayor Hurek?
Yes.
All right. And back to regular business agenda items? Welcome back.
Thank you.
We moved it to October 11th. All right. We have no other items on the agenda, so this is a short one.
AB report, AB 1234 report is not in there.
It wasn't on the agenda. We can report at the next council meeting.
So, okay.
All right. We'll adjourn the meeting at 7:13, a new world record.